Today, I am going to call this meeting to order at four thirty-four. This is a workshop for two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school budget review. Continued discussions on articles.
Sure. Thank you, Paula. We're going to continue our work this evening, knowing that this is a workshop. One of the things that we, and we're now getting into the work where there are positions and programs and things being considered to be removed from the budget as we do this work. We're probably looking that if there are people who do want to speak, it probably makes sense to have probably a, probably a limited, there'll be an opportunity to do that at our formal meeting. And the next formal meeting would be February twenty-six during the public comment. But in this workshop session, if there are people who are interested in coming up to be able to talk and share information, it won't be a dialogue similar to a public comment section. It'll be an opportunity for the school committee to be able to hear any information before we dig into our work this evening. There are some positions and programs that will be under consideration. We've tried to do our best in situations to let, alert people to that, to be able to give them a heads up in terms of that work. So, and we have a small number of people. I think if there are people who do want to share a few thoughts before we dig into our work this evening, I would encourage you to come up and introduce yourself as far as your name and your position. Don't feel that you have to, but we did want to appreciate the opportunity where people had come out to be able to come in person, wanted to make sure there's an opportunity there if there were some things to be able to say or talk about and advocate on your behalf to be able to do that. So. Chair, okay, if we open that up now?
Sure.
And if there's anyone who's interested. Go right there, Kevin. Yeah, right there. You just have to push the button that says push. Push that and that microphone will be on.
Okay, thank you. I'm Kevin Way. I'm the co-department chair for health and PE at the high school. I am here to, I'd just like to really touch on two things and thank you for the opportunity to speak. One is that we learned that our department would be affected possibly. Not sure how this will end up. But, so just a few things. And the other is to talk a little bit about Marty Kane, who would be the employee affected. Looking at the courses that we teach and just looking over total number of students served, we teach a red-white schedule. A total, just this year was, as an example, we serve nine hundred and twelve students in the health phys ed program at the high school per year. So that basically works out to one hundred and twenty-four students per semester. So if we take one person out of the equation, we're obviously adding that on. And what's going to end up happening is that we won't be able to offer, we now offer five different courses, PE courses and the health class. So that we won't be able to do all of that. And some, some of there, there's a safety concern in there for our adventure programming. So that's just one aspect. We are, the wing we're in is by itself. And so we take pride in running a good wing, the athletics wing. And so, again, you take one out of the equation, there's going to be an impact for sure, for students, for our kids. Excuse me. So. The next part with Marty, Marty left a position at the middle school with the idea of coming to her dream job at the high school. And she, in two years, has done a phenomenal job, not quite do, phenomenal job with anything she's been asked to do. Part of that is the developmental, health developmental PE, and she's done a fantastic job jumping in and making that an effective program and working with the special ed program too. Her regular, regular ed classes are impressive. She does a phenomenal job connecting with kids. And she is, in thirty years of teaching, she is not the type of employee you want to have go. So she's top echelon. Just wanted to say that. And I'm not building that up. She is legit. She's a, she's the varsity field hockey coach, which I know that's not the teaching position, but it's important. And that's, part of that is that connection she has. Again, not sure where this will end up, but if we look at how, and making cuts is always difficult. I wanted to say we're more important than other schools or whatever, but I can tell you that at the high school, we have an excellent program. I've been to state conferences and we have one of the best PE and health programs in the state, hands down. So we wouldn't want to impact that, obviously. And then kind of the bottom line is, how does it impact our kids? And it will if, if we lose Marty. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
Yep.
Is this good? Good evening, everyone. Emily, it's nice to see you back. Matt came to me on Friday afternoon and shared with me his, what's going on right now. And you guys have an incredibly difficult job right now, trying to figure out how to make cuts and find money and everything else. So I don't envy your, your job at all right now. But I'm here to talk about my students and why I think it's so important that alt exists in this district. We have forty students right now, and all of those students have something going on that makes it very difficult for them to thrive in the regular high school environment. I know quite a few of you have been to visit us, came for our Thanksgiving, our annual Thanksgiving meal, and you got to meet quite a few of the kids and, and hear their stories. And every year, it's similar stories, different kids, same kind of things. But I, I just, you know, my heart sunk after talking to Matt and the entire weekend. I was just in my head going over and over, what can I do to help this? What can I do to save these kids? Because that's my priority, is making sure that these kids have a safe, nurturing, structured place to go. We do have probably over twenty-five percent of our population, it has an IEP or a 504. So we do, in a, in a matter of speaking, have a population of kids that do need a different place to go. But they may not fit in a special ed classroom. A lot of my students have severe anxiety disorders. They've been diagnosed with depression, ADHD. They have suicidal ideation issues where they've been hospitalized, sometimes multiple times at Spring Harbor. They're able to come back to us where it's a safe, nurturing place. They know us. We're basically a four-year looping program. You know, you start with us as a freshman and you can stay all four years. And again, it's that, that space that they need. A lot of our kids have PTSD from issues that they've experienced perhaps at home, unsafe environments. I have quite a few kids living with grandparents because they not, they can't live with their parents any longer. So we, every child that we have has something going on. So I've done this for twenty-six years. And I love this program. And now for the first time, I really feel like it's in peril. I understand the money situation, I get that, but I'm here to fight for this program because Sanford needs this program. We have a high percentage of kids that, as you know, free and reduced, just have to look at those numbers, that come from difficult environments perhaps, that need that extra security and support. And they get it through us. It's, we become kind of like second parents to them in many ways because they know what to expect, they know the boundaries. They're learning lots of social, emotional skills when they're with us, as well as their academics. We have a very high graduation rate. You know, if you want to talk numbers now, you know, it's, I was being more qualitative just now, talking about the reasons why it's important to have these kids in these programs, because of who they are and what they are, where they come from, and what they want. But just in terms of numbers, it's, if you look at the tuition, because I predict more than half of our kids will not graduate from high school, maybe, maybe even more. I just have to look at the list of the names and I know their stories and why they came to us in the first place. Huge, huge attendance issues, failing everything. You know, kids coming with almost no credits, and then they come to us and they start coming to school. They're staying in school and they're graduating. They're becoming productive citizens where they're healthier, happier, and giving back versus dropping out of school. And we know, all of us sitting here, how detrimental that is to our community, future families, everything. So I, I, if you lose those kids, say only half drop out, that's twenty kids. What is the tuition rate right now for kids? I'm going to ballpark it, ten thousand a year. So you're looking at two hundred thousand dollars a year straight out that of kids that will not be paying Sanford tuition. I know that probably doesn't pay for our program, but if you think about thirty kids dropping out, and then also what does that look like on our, on our roles, you know, and, and when people are looking to move to Sanford and say like, oh, I want to go to a school, good school district. And that's stuff that people look at. So I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. I'm doing whatever I can to help these kids.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for listening and.
Sorry that we can't speak at this point. It's very hard not to, but thank you.
Oh, I'm, yes. All right. Well, thank you for listening. Keep us in mind.
Also, late this afternoon, we received an email from the Sanford High School Counseling Department, and I've printed out a copy of that. So I'd probably ask that you take a couple of minutes to read that right now while we kind of get set up and transition gears into that, just so that, that was some information that came in today that people also wanted people to be aware of. In the meantime, if we can put the, yep, let's go back to the first slide. Yep, we'll start with that one. And as we get ready here, people can read over that information. While they do that, I will just give an overview of our process. Our school committee is aware of the process, so you can continue to read. But just to review our process is, we have a school committee budget workshop this evening. We are all working towards Monday, February twenty-sixth. That is when we are looking to have a budget, a two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school budget approved by the school committee. That's a budget that can then move on to the city council. We will present that budget to the city council on Tuesday, March fifth in collaboration with the city's budget. And then during the month of March is when that is going to be defended and debated with the idea that the city council will approve a school budget at their first meeting in April, the first Tuesday in April. That will then allow the enough time for that budget to then go to our citizens in the voter referendum, the budget referendum, which is in June. And that is when it actually becomes official. So I think it's, it was mentioned earlier, one thing to keep in mind here is we have some very challenging work here that we're making considerations and recommendations on that to be able to do that with the idea that that is not final. There may be things that would come back and change along the way. I do, as we crunch the numbers and look at the numbers, I do anticipate for us to have to continue to do more work with the budget after it gets to the city council. That's my expectation, just as I look at some of the numbers and where our past history is and looking at that. So nothing will really be finalized until the city council approves that budget in the beginning of April. And even then, it won't be finalized until our voters approve it in June. So as we do this work, I say that there are challenges as you come back, that it's kind of a moving, it's a little bit of a moving puzzle for us to be able to look at that. So that's the timeline. This evening, I'd like to go to the next slide and review where we currently stand. When we started this work at the school committee level at our January twenty-ninth initial school committee budget workshop, I presented a budget that had a nine point two percent increase in expenses. That's five million, six hundred seventy-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-three dollars. That equates to an increase in taxation to twenty-nine point four percent. That was our starting place. At our school budget workshop last Monday, we made some changes there, recommended changes on the expense side. We reduced the budget by seven hundred eighty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. And so that becomes a total of an eight percent increase in expenses, four million, eight hundred ninety thousand, forty dollars. We were also able to throw in some revenue in there as well to impact taxation. That totaled two million, three thou, three thousand, six hundred eleven dollars on the impact there. So when you look at the changes we made last Monday, that brought our taxation down to seventeen point two percent of two million, eight hundred eighteen thousand, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. So we've done work, but as you can see, there's a lot more work probably that has to be done. When you look at trying for us to be able to look at a budget that is able to meet our needs of our students and our community, but at the same time balance that with what our taxpayers are able to also balance and afford. That's the challenge that we have. I will say, as we've gone into this work, it's been really difficult. Any considerations and recommendations that are shared, I want to say a couple of things right off the bat, and I think it's important to understand this. We are in a position where any of the things that we're offering up, there's nothing here that is easy, and there's nothing that comes with, without an impact, without an impact to our students, impact to our staff and the education that we're able to deliver on every day. We're also looking at, when you looked at some of the positions that we were able to use, to fund the last few years through federal funds and our ESER funds, to be able to meet our students' needs as they were coming back from the pandemic. Those are funds that are going away after this year. So we're also looking at, even though those funds are going away, some of those needs aren't. So we're also trying to prioritize the best that we can do in terms of, it might be some things that are changing priorities. We have a number of ESER positions that are not continuing. So it's not a question of any position or any program that you're going to see here that it's something that anyone is looking to say, yeah, we need to get rid of that, or we need to cut that position with that. That's not the case, and I want to reiterate that. I also want to reiterate, anything that we have here is also not a reflection on any of the people who are going to be impacted by those positions. Any of our staff who are directly or indirectly impacted by that, it's not a reflection at all in terms of anything saying that what they don't do on day in, day out, to what they bring to the Sanford School Department and bring to be able to help our students and our staff every day. And so I want to be clear with that. That's something that we're going to continue to probably have to remind ourselves and revisit that as we're able to look at that work for that. I'll, school committee, is there any comments or anything that people want to, I'll stop there. If anybody wants to say anything. If not, we can jump into the work that we've got in front of us this evening.
I just want to echo what you're saying. It's nothing, it's not, nothing, this is a struggle. We batting a ball around in circles and it's, it's just not easy to do. And we're looking at every number, every, you know, we're turning every page and it's, so, you know, thank you, everybody, for all your work. It's definitely exactly what Matt said. It's not an easy thing to look at.
Okay, so the work this evening, these are some considerations that I would ask us to take into, take into consideration this evening to impact our budget, okay? So as we do that, I've kind of put these in order as you move, and that's one of the things we're trying to look at, is any impact that we have, we try to start in, in the classrooms and work our way out and talk about impact in students and, and people connected to that. The first thing that we have is decreased tuition reimbursement costs. That's something that we have as a budgeted item that is based on previous, the previous three years number, plus we add twenty percent to that. Well, when we do that in this budget, there is a real impact there from, from the COVID year. The COVID year was where there was a large number of tuition reimbursements, to the point that that's really skewed that data. So if you're able to move that outlier, you would see we've been pretty consistent for all of the years there, except for that outlier. And that outlier does impact us somewhat. And so as we look at that, the, the number for that is twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars. If we're able to adjust that, that would put us into a situation where we'd be able to meet those contractual situations with that for it. Yep, twenty-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one dollars for the tuition reimbursement costs that we'd be able to decrease what we have in there. Okay? All right. And then as we look at further information, there's another adjustment that I see is not on the list that I'd want to be able to put on there. This was something, as we're also looking at the budget in terms of wages and benefits, we were able to make a number there of, an adjustment of fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-eight dollars. So that's fifty-two thousand, seven forty-eight for a adjustment in wages and benefits. Any questions on those two? Those are pretty straightforward. I think that those are the ones that actually are not going to come back and directly impact people or programs. The next one we have is, we, we have two ed techs that are currently in the local budget that we're going to move from the local budget in special education. We're going to move them to the IDEA budget. And so that way, that would be able to fit for what the, what the IDEA budget is for. And we're able to continue to be able to supplement what we're able to do for that program. By doing that, the number that we are able to save there is ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars. Ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars as we're able to move those. Those won't be, positions are eliminated. That's just what we're continuing to be able to look at, what we've got for our resources. If you notice and have been following, we were able to do that in a couple of other areas. We were able to do that for Sanford Regional Technical Center using the Perkins grant to be able to move things around there, to be able to maximize that. We also were able to do the same thing for Title I in terms of some of the adjustments and changes that we're making in Title I. There's impacts there, but we're able to kind of use those funds to be able to go. And this is similar for the bridge program for that. We're also crunching numbers. And a lot of this, as it comes down to it, I want to speak to enrollment. And that's very difficult because we are trying to be able to look at our numbers and see what the numbers are able to come back and support. And that's something where there's probably saying, ideally, we would love to keep staff, but we do have to be able to look at those numbers. So the first one that's going to be an impact to classroom teachers is looking at resource room, special education teachers at Sanford Middle School. We have a combination of some people that are pull out. We have some that are pu, push in. And we're looking at trying to be able to arrange that in ways that I think we've got some opportunities to be able to decrease one position there and still be able to, be able to meet needs of students in terms of, obviously, some of those class sizes in the push-in model would probably look a little bit different, but that's something right now that, under the circumstances, not something we'd want to do, but we feel like we have to do in this particular situation. One thing we're looking at also when it comes to class sizes was we reduce, we removed all of the ESER classroom teacher positions that I talked about that we've had in the budget for the last three years. We knew that, we knew that those funds would go away and that our class sizes would be increasing. One thing that we did was by removing the ESER teachers that had forty classroom teachers, content core classroom teachers for Sanford Middle School remain. And that would be ten for each grade, and that would roughly be able to look at meeting the needs of the, of those particular grades. Well, when we dig deeper here, when we're forced to do that, we look at the enrollment for seventh grade. And our enrollment for incoming seventh graders next year is right around two hundred and one. So when you look at that with the classroom ratios, we're recommending that we go down from, in seventh grade, from ten teachers to eight teachers. We don't have that list up there. We don't know who that is going to be yet because when it comes to certification in terms of teaching at the middle school, that varies between what your certification is, what the content areas, it's needed. We have to be able to go back and look at bumping rights. When we say two teachers, even though we're looking at seventh grade, that's not to say the two teachers are going to be coming from seventh grade. That's something that we'd have to be able to do if that is a recommendation that is accepted. We'd be able to, due to enrollment at the middle school, further reduce two of a core classroom teachers. We also, similar, as we look at that same approach, looking at Sanford High School, we also, we are looking at a physical education slash health teacher. That is truly based on enrollment. When you look at that, any high school change that we make is there's going to be an offset impact on probably offerings of what's coming back. That's, that's, that's something that is probably undeniable. The challenge that we have is, you know what we do for class sizes at the elementary, what we do for the middle. At the high school, we'd be able to come back and be able to still have to right-size and tighten that up the best that we can. Not something that people are excited about, but as we look at that in terms of there, some impact, but overall, that's something that is something for consideration to be able to help with those class sizes.
Can I just ask you a question?
Yep.
Just, um, looking at the enrollment, this one that we were given that was as of January twenty-fourth, and then, I'm not sure who gave me this one. This was printed on the February fifth. I just wanted to clarify the numbers. My, Jen, you're next to me. Am I losing my mind? Because this is for fifth grade, two fifty. Six is two thirty-nine, two forty-eight, and two thirty-one. And that was printed on February fifth. And then this one, so I, I guess, I mean, it's not, there's just, I mean, quite a bit of difference in numbers.
What's it, what is it over here?
And this projected for next year. For sixth grade was two sixteen, but the seventh grade, okay, sorry. It's getting me confused because of the incoming will be sixth graders. So the incoming seventh graders is two oh three.
Correct.
It's different, it's just different from this one that was printed recent.
Yeah, because your sixth grade is showing two thirty-nine on this one.
Okay. I think we've continued to update those as we look at it.
Okay. I just.
But I, I think we did, but I think that's important. We probably want to double-check that if we had something that was inconsistent or, because that seems like, even though the adjustment, that feels like a big one in terms of that. So we might want to be able to come back and get closer eyes on that one as we look at doing that. We've tried to update those enrollments because remember last week on the fifth, we did remove a fourth grade teacher. did remove a fourth grade teacher, uh, from that. That was part of the list that we did in terms of that. So, um, I know Steve's looking at that to see if there's anything there that, um, is a error that we've made in terms of transposing or... What's that? Yep.
Yeah, because 23 students different is a classroom. So that's where...
From 125 to 25.
And when we're budgeting that, that would impact quite a bit of money.
Okay. So that's something we probably want to, um, um, uh, screen or just, uh, uh, tag to make sure that we're able to look at that. No, thank you. That's, uh, um, as we check on that. Obviously, we're trying to look at everything through a, uh, another lens, paying attention to looking at, um, uh, student teacher loads, uh, throughout Sanford High School and looking at it. Okay. Um, but it also leads right into, that was going back to the middle school, looking at phys ed and health ed, education. We do have situ-, we have, uh, what we have printed out would be for you showing, um, uh, class loads for all of the teachers there and to the different things that they're able to come back and teach.
The small, this sheet here was our enrollment from 1920, school year 1920. So when, during our discussion about class sizes, what were our class sizes prior to COVID? So that, that's what that is. The paper hole, the, the hole punch went through the year, I think, so.
Sorry, I just wasted fifteen minutes.
Well, I can breathe better now because I was worried that our numbers, we're looking at that, so, uh, thank you. Um, with it. So as we look at, um, we're looking at everything we can do at Sanford High School in terms of looking at class loads. What's challenging there is, uh, it's not as simple as like a elementary or a middle school. When you get to the high school, you have core content and core graduation requirements and electives and things that we can be able to try to look at. But we also know that under these circumstances, we absolutely have to have all, uh, everything, um, to be considered even, um, and all the things at Sanford High School. Um, the other thing we've been looking at doing is restructuring ed techs. Uh, mostly what we're looking at right now with that is through the elementary level. That is something that, um, we feel that, uh, we can also come up with five, restructuring five ed techs. That'll have to be something that is trying to look at what we have and trying to set them up the best that we can. Oh, uh, getting back to the high school for the, uh, if we were to make that, um, at Sanford High School for that teacher, um, by removing that one teacher in terms of that, that is $97,590. So that would be the impact adding to the list there. Uh, the two teachers at Sanford Middle School, looking at that, we estimate that, as I said, we're not sure yet, but we estimate that at $75,000, uh, for each position salaries and benefits. So that'd be a total of $150,000. The resource room teacher at the middle school, we still don't know what that, um, exactly is going to be. We're estimating that as well as $75,000 for salary and benefits at Sanford Middle School. Okay? So sorry about that. I did not provide those numbers for you for those positions. Moving down to restructure ed techs, uh, looking at restructuring those five ed techs, the number that we have, um, for that is, um, uh, estimated at $139,615. $139,615 as we look at restructuring the ed techs. Okay. Uh, also, um, in terms of, uh, the counseling receptionist, uh, some information that we've included there would be, um, for the, um, responsibilities and some of the job, um, responsibilities and, um, of that particular position. You also have a letter that was also sent on behalf of that. So as you look at that, that would be at Sanford High School, uh, in terms of the school counseling office. Um, there are, um, two people, uh, who work in that, uh, work in that office, um, in the idea of administrative assistant responsibilities. And so we would be, uh, looking at the counseling receptionist. Uh, so we'd go from two to one in that office. Um, as you can see, not ideal, not ideal because of, you know, there's going to be impact there for some of the responsibilities that go in. Uh, the total, uh, for that is $50,300 for savings. Would be $50,300, um, for that. Moving our way and staying at Sanford High School, looking at the attendance coordinator, uh, the attendance coordinator position, uh, if we were to be able to remove that, that would be an estimate of $91,869. Uh, you know that in this position, uh, that's one that, uh, also helps keep our kids connected to school. Uh, the responsibility of tracking and intervening with attendance issues is complex one. So we usually have that someone dedicated to that position to be able to find solutions to help get, um, improve their attendance and be better connected to school. Uh, the person works closely with teachers and with school counselors and with admin and with the SRO, uh, and outreach to be able to find solutions to support those students. Um, it also can, uh, fill in some gaps, serving administration in terms of some supervision and student accountability at the school, uh, with that. Obviously, uh, we've had this position for a number of years. If it wasn't to be having, um, then, uh, you wouldn't be having interventions and you'd probably see, um, also students who would be, uh, more truant and more absent from school, that personal connection going away in terms of, uh, where that is. Okay? So that's, that's the high school coordinator. As I mentioned, with all these positions, there's going to be impacts. There's going to be, um, if these positions, uh, are removed, uh, from the budget. And then, uh, the last one is looking at Sanford High School, the alternative learning program. Uh, you also heard, uh, comments about that, uh, earlier today, um, in terms of doing a nice job of what that program, uh, connects. Uh, we usually have, uh, that program has, um, three and a half teachers, three full-time teachers and another teacher, uh, that teaches halftime, who teach, half, half, um, Sanford High School math and half alternative education learning math. So you're looking at, uh, three and a half teachers there. Uh, one of the, uh, with that, it, it serves about 40 students in terms of that, grades nine through 12. Uh, you're looking at, um, obviously if the impact there would be a loss of connection for kids who are being able to be successful in that program. And also looking at impact in terms of their attendance, their connection to school and obviously, uh, at risk for dropping out in terms of that. It was mentioned earlier what that, uh, what subsidy we receive for kids at high school. We do receive $8,465 for every student, nine through 12. That's a base. Obviously, if you have students who have some other factors, whether that be if they're also special education, if they're also, um, economically disadvantaged as they go through the formula, there could be more costs that are able to come back for that, uh, through that. So when you look at, um, removing, um, uh, teachers in that, we would be removing the three teachers. We'd also be able to combine the math teacher, uh, one with one who's retiring, uh, so that we'd be able to, um, fit that in. You're now looking at a total there, uh, in that program of $335,378 in salaries and benefits as we tried to look into if the alternative learning program was to be removed. So, um, any questions on any of the, um, uh, budget considerations that I've presented to date so far?
Uh, yes. Um, at our next meeting, if I could just have, we heard, uh, Mrs. Webb say there's about 40 students in Alt Ed. Could I have a breakdown of how many are freshmen, sophomore, junior, seniors? And how many of our current seniors began the program as freshmen all the way through?
Okay, sure. Yep. I don't have that off the top of my hand, but we, we can be able to come back and get that information, um, for it. Any other, uh, questions? Comments? Thoughts? Uh, I was going to total up what this total was and show you what that would be the impact on the budget. And then we were going to present in, uh, the slides for the various articles and what the impact is and where we, where we currently sit, um, if those, with those considerations.
Um, I'll just take a minute. I speak just for myself, not for the committee at large, um, about Alt Ed because I do appreciate, um, the representative coming and sharing with us tonight. And from my perspective, Alt Ed is incredibly, it's, it's a difficult thing to visit and I feel, um, it would be responsible for me to offer some context as to where I'm coming from in a decision-making process, um, not necessarily placing faces, but just from a budgetary perspective. Um, you know, I did some digging over the weekend into comparable schools and what I found is that from a social worker, an outreach psychologist, school counselors, and, um, assistant principal perspective, we're pretty on par with what, um, schools who are comparable to our size. What I did find though is that there isn't a school that is running an Alt Ed program and a bridge style program. So there's no duplication of services in other school districts. Um, most of the Alt Eds in the other districts are what we would qualify as bridge for our school district. So with that being said, you know, I have to just look at it from what it is, which is, it, it's essentially like a really awesome little private school within a public school. It, it has its own space, its own teachers, its own bathrooms, its own entrance, and, and it, and it suits the needs of those students. But with the budgetary dollars, we are charged with making sure that all students have all resources or as many resources as possible. And I'm just not 100% sure that from a public school perspective, the cost of running the program, although incredible, um, is sustainable for something that our community can sustain long-term. You know, my hope would be that we have these really awesome existing resources that I listed, like social workers, outreach workers, psychologists, school counselors, and that we would be setting folks up for success through access to those people. Additionally, you know, hoping to look outside of the box for, you know, taking an inventory of what those students' needs will be. We learned during COVID that although online learning wasn't for every student, there were some students that thrived in that environment. Um, we're seeing that right now over at the Noble Flex program. They do some part-time learning, in, some part-time in-person learning and part-time online learning. Um, so as I said, I only speak for myself and there aren't any final decisions being made. Um, but it is, like Melissa said and Matt said at the beginning of the meeting, it's just an incredibly, incredibly difficult process to find the amount of money that we have to find in this budget to get it passed. Um, you know, my hope is that, you know, if we were unable to fund Alt Ed, that, um, we would be able to find ways to support these vulnerable students in the same ways that we support other vulnerable students.
Thank you, Jen. I know, um, trying to, anytime we're talking about a program, you want to try to give people a heads up about the program and, and, and looking at that. I know when I spoke with our alternative ed staff last Friday, it's not the first time we've come to talk about budget implications. And I will say that, when I say that, I don't point that out to say that it's not meant to be a negative. It's meant to say, we've considered it, but it's been able to also be in the budget because of its effectiveness and the impact that it has. And so I would reiterate that is, that is up for consideration, is not a reflection of its effectiveness or its impact. It's more about the situation that we are in, um, currently, uh, when it starts to get down to look at numbers.
I, I would also add that I feel like we're doing a really good job, that no decision is a snap decision, meaning we are looking at long-term sustainability and what we're facing coming down the road. So if we knew we could grow a money tree in the backyard and we just had to get through this year, you know, that changes a little bit of what you're doing. But we know that enrollment is down for subsequent years, including next year, which means less subsidy, which means again, we're back in a position with a difficult budget season.
And just to talk about that, when you look at enrollment, when we talk about the, uh, expectation is the projection that we're looking at enrollment being down, we have a very large graduating senior class. So when that class goes out, it's replaced by the incoming kindergarten class. And as we look at what we've got for the numbers there, we are expecting to have less students there. And so there's always going to be the fluid, uh, transfer of students that are coming to us and leaving us withing that. But when you look at the actual numbers there and that discrepancy, it gives us concern to say, uh, that's going to be an impact. We also know that there's going to be an impact on valuation. And in Sanford, we are a high receiver, more, uh, over 70% of our budget is, uh, state funds. And when we do that, what drives the formula is going to be number of students. So if your enrollment is going up, you're going to be able to get more subsidy and, um, for that. If your enrollment's going down, you're going to get less subsidy because you have less students going through. And when your valuation is going up, they, the formula then thinks they expect that community, in this case Sanford, to be able to contribute more to education. And so we're looking at, remember, uh, those of you who follow us consistently would know that we've talked about, uh, we anticipated our valuation to be in the, if everything stayed the same with this budget and the mill rate of losing 1.2 million dollars in, in subsidy based on our valuation in Sanford going up. And so with that, um, they changed the mill, adjusted the mill rate, we only, um, were impacted 567,000. Nonetheless, that's 567,000 dollars less in subsidy that we get, that they're expecting that the community and therefore the taxpayers should be able to take that on. Looking ahead to next year, without knowing what the adjustment to the mill rate is, if they keep the mill rate, we're looking at 1.4. Okay. 1.7. Uh, that, um, now, we're also hoping for an adjustment of mill rate, but we're looking at the idea of trying to meet needs, but also with some idea of sustainability. And I think that's coming back, that as we do this difficult work, we're also looking at what's in front of us, but it's also being able to anticipate down the line. Any other, um, questions or, uh, comments before we move on? Okay.
I'm just, you know, I, I feel like everybody's already touched upon it, but I just feel like I also need to just say that, like, we realize that every line item, every dollar impacts our staff, impacts our students, and that, um, it's just a, no, there's no win here. There's no win situation here. Um, we just hope that when we bring this to the city, that we are done. And, you know, I guess I would encourage the millions that are watching this to also sort of, um, be present when watching the city council as well, when they make their budget decisions.
Yeah. And, uh, obviously, uh, one of the things I think has really helped us, um, over the years is Sanford supports education. Um, I'm, I, I know that, I've seen that, it's been proven. They don't do it blindly, right? That we have to earn that and to be able to do that. And when we are being able to advocate, I think you'll be able to see that. Uh, unlike a lot of other, um, I shouldn't, I need to be careful. Uh, one of the things I'm proud of is in Sanford, we have, um, a pretty collaborative, uh, positive working relationship with our city. And you see sometimes that's not always the case and the impacts that they have. I think that relationship's going to be tested just because... I think that relationship's going to be tested just because of the impacts that we have and the needs, because I don't think, speaking for all of our elected officials, no one got into this to be able to say, hey, how can we devastate with that? I say that the city budget's also challenging, right? We're looking at something too, that that too is sometimes the collaboration, the two were able to come back and kind of together to be able to help. I'm worried about, we'll know more, but I also know that the city on their side is working really hard to also try to be able to continue to offer a level of services, but also to do that in a way for taxpayers. So I think it's nice if we can go, that's probably a nice segue, if we can go to the next slide.
I just wanted to ask what the PE restructured looks like, how many classes and stuff down the line? Just as a, just as a follow-up, you know, what does it look like now versus what we're going to offer with upposition gone?
Sure, and that's a moving target a little bit because it's awful hard because we're in the process now of signing up for classes and being able to look at what people are needing. And so, as you know, that is, there's a certain process to that. So I think we can give an overview with that, the best that we can do, because it's going to be impacted in terms of what's offered and doing that. Yep, yep, we can provide that. Okay, if we can go back up, I do want to bring up the next slide, which shows what we were able to do last time. So I'm trying to give people, this is as of last week, on February 5th, we were able to remove the budget by 786,223. There were some impacts there, for sure, as we removed sometimes things from the budget. But there are also some things that we were able to do by moving people into Title I, cutting back from full year to school year only, removing some positions from the budget, and impacting those. So there's a list right there of the impact. Up above is our expenses. Down below, the bottom half, is where we had some increased subsidy for that. And the increased subsidy, we were getting creative, looking at some of our reserves, using some of our carryover. We were able to also secure additional revenue from our sending schools for SRTC and whatnot. And so that was $1,217,388. And so there's the total last week of $2,3,611. So if we go to the next slide, this would be our latest update. If the considerations that have been shared this evening, how they would impact the budget if they were accepted, we look at expenses would be decreased by $1,115,774,000. And so that would then leave, expenses would then have an increase in this budget of $3,774,266. That would reduce the expense increase from 8% to 6.1%. Everything we took this evening was coming from the expense side. So when you look at taxation, that $1,115,774,000 just transfers over. What would then be impacted to taxpayers would be $1,703,112, and that would be looking at an increase in taxation of 10.4%. Okay, so that's where if, what we, for considerations evening if they're taking, that would be where things currently stand. We want to break that down a little bit further, and if we can go to the next slide, we'll start to break that down. We did update our enrollment spreadsheet, okay? So there is an updated enrollment spreadsheet in there with those positions being taken away. You'd see most of that be impacted probably at the middle school, where those ratios are easier to break down. All right, if we can break out of that, that's there for people to see an update. The next slide that we have would be, this is how it breaks down, okay? And this is currently where we stand. Article 1, which is regular instruction, that is increased, right now with changes, by 4.2% or $741,190, okay? The turn the page article, right? If we were just going to take what was in Article 1 last year and just turn the page, that would be a 6.2% increase or $1,082,377. I think that's important to point out because you'll show that turning the page is looking at salaries and benefits, okay? Now, we do have some positions that are added in this budget, okay? So in those total, $792,78. Those positions would be keeping social workers for regular education students at all of our schools, our three elementary schools, our three elementary schools and the middle school, okay? We do have an extra special ed social worker in the budget at the high school, but that's in a different article, okay? So there would be four social workers there. We also have a couple English as a second language, or multilingual learners, to be able to keep up with that increased population. We've added two positions there. And then other positions we have would be an elementary music teacher, an elementary art teacher, and a study hall ed tech at the high school. So those positions are in the budget. They were not in the budget last year, in the local budget. All of those positions were in, are currently being used for ESER funds. And that total is $792,78.
Do you have a quick reference guide? Can you take me back to the increase in subsidy, just so that folks can correlate? For example, we receive funding for the ESOL teachers. Can you kind of tick off on there which ones are covered by that?
Yep, so in terms of, we did, even though our subsidy was impacted by valuation, we were able to get some additional funding based on increased students, increased student populations. And so that number for ESOL was $185,681. So that is funding that we received. Our intent is to put that towards ESOL, okay? And that is looking at that subsidy of not being tax relief as much as being, making sure it's dedicated to those positions. The other teachers that are on there for music and art, there's an impact there that those, by having those teachers, they do not negatively impact our subsidy, okay? So it's not like it's more falling onto the local to pay in those particular cases. We don't see the increase per se that we would see for ESOL, but it's not like they're saying you're past your number there, you have to, that that should be a local expense, okay? So it's still subsidy. The social workers, those are not something that we receive funding for. It's not really part of the formula, okay? Nor is the study hall ed tech at Sanford High School, okay? So that's where we are in Article 1. If we go to the next page, Article 2, okay? There's some things that we, oh, I'm sticking on Article 1. Some of the things that we also removed from those positions back on February 5th, you saw things that we pulled out of there. And then you also see if we were looking at this evening, what that list would look like by adding. A number of, many of our items for consideration tonight are coming from Article 1. Okay, so that would be what was last week, and then this would be what is under consideration this evening.
So it looks like you're missing the secretary.
It's in a different articles, come on. Yep, that's Article 1, all right? If we could go to the next page, Article 2 in Special Education. That budget had an, that has an increase of 15.8%, or $1,708,816. The turn the page for that, if we just took what we have existing in the local budget, that would be an increase of 9.4% or $1,011,200, okay? There are some positions in there that we are adding. These are moving over from ESER positions. We understand that impact, but this is based on enrollment, this is based on IEPs, this is based on us being able to deliver the services that we need. There'll be two ed techs at the elementary level, one for the resource room at MCS, one for the self-contained program at Carl J. Lamb. We are looking for a self-contained teacher at Carl J. Lamb. And we're looking, I mentioned a special education social worker at Sanford High School. This would be a second one that would allow us to keep up with all the IEP requirements there. So that, for those four positions, that's a total of $264,101. We did have some that are not continuing in the budget. That would be the, one of a resource room teacher at the middle school and moving those two bridge ed techs from the local to IDA. I'm assuming we also have what the, do you know what our subsidy was for special education? Because we did receive an increase in our subsidy for special education for that.
$801,000.
So we did receive increased subsidy, $801,000. We're putting $264,101 of that to those four positions. The rest are going to a number of other things, transportation, outside placements, those pieces, the costs to be able to do that, okay? Any questions on Article 2?
Can you just repeat what you just said, just so that it's loud and like, loud and clear? But basically, what we're getting reimbursed for, for special education? Because the majority of our special education is reimbursed.
Correct, so we are getting an $801,000 additional subsidy this current year. And we're using it towards, I would say, those four new positions plus the outside placement of additional cost of $569,000. That was the new law that we have to pay for holidays, not just when they show up.
And is it correct, I just want to make sure I'm saying things correctly. So when we're looking at, we're not going to do the whole special ed budget because we've already done that in the past, but just for people that are listening, that the special ed budget, we, out of the regular local fund, don't pay a lot into because it's mostly reimbursed, am I, is that correct?
We still pay, I think we get 74% if I remember right.
Of reimbursement and then?
It's always two years behind and then there's a cap on the percentage that you can get.
But we are mandated by state law.
Correct.
For everything, yes, to provide those services.
To provide those services, yes.
Sorry, I also made this suggestion to Steve just now. When you put together the next slideshow, I think for, if I were not sitting on the school committee and as a taxpayer, I just got this, I would be thinking that you, even though you're repeating it after you talked about these positions, I would be thinking that you guys are adding four new positions. These are not new positions, they were ESER positions that are moving over to the local budget. So I just want to, like, if somehow that's more on print than just you saying it, because if I were just picking it up as a taxpayer, I'm like, oh, great, you know, they're adding four positions, but they're cutting all of these.
And it's not a feel-good when you're hearing they're adding new when you're not?
Yeah, and we knew back when the ESER positions came, one of the things that we said was, remember back at the time, right? Those fun times back as we were working our way through COVID. We wanted to get our kids back to school, we wanted to get them back to school full-time, and we wanted to get them to address any educational recovery or learning loss that was needed. And we wanted to put the social, address the social emotional needs. So we invested in staff. Some of those would be positions that, we needed those even before the COVID in terms of that. So we're being well aware that we don't want to play a game of saying, oh, we'll just get these funds and then we'll try to stick it into the local budget. I think what you're seeing along with that is there's hard work being done to also have to restructure or prioritize to be able to know that. But I think, Emily, that's a good suggestion that we can also, to be able to show that, because of, in these particular cases, we are also getting funding from subsidy. And we want to make sure that that is going to the areas it's dedicated to for that.
Yeah, and maybe just earmarking the non-negotiables, like the things we can't control, like transportation, you know? So, because I'm always still a little cloudy too about special ed. But I know that there's a lot of that that's non-negotiable because it's driven by state law. So, but you're never really sure which positions are driven by state law.
Yeah, and Cheryl mentioned this, one of the things that's increasing the special ed budget is a new change that was recently enacted. In the past, for our students who went to school in outside placements, we were only charged for the days that they attended, okay? So if someone was sick and didn't attend, we would not be charged that daily cost for that particular day. Well, it's been switched now that we are charged for all of those costs, regardless of someone's there that day or not. So that's an impact that we, in the past, we were able to capture some savings there. And now that's something that is also impacting that budget. Okay, if we'll go back to the slideshow, and now we'll move to Article 3, that's Career and Technical Education. This is where SRTC lives. That increased by 7.5%, $304,757. Turn the page article there's increased 6.5% or $264,674. We, we've worked hard in that particular budget to be able to see how can we maximize what we've got for any revenue or any grants. And so there is the Perkins grant, and so Matt Peterman's done a nice job of kind of repurposing, putting things, moving things from local, putting it into Perkins, moving things from Perkins, putting it into the local so that we can be able to maximize our funding to be able to do that. And so he's done that, so he's moved a couple things from Perkins that we covered last year into the local budget, okay? We did add early childhood ed tech. That's going to help us with SRT, but also the pre-K program that's part of the early education, early childhood education program. So as we look at that, there's some changes that are happening there. And then there's some items that are not continuing in the budget. We did remove last week two ed techs, and we moved some of the supplies and assessments from the local to Perkins. But the biggest thing we did last week was a change that we've made is with all of our sending schools. In the past, we did not, Sanford did not participate in the capital program. We traded off that to pick up the other expenses that would be between the gap between any revenue we received and any expenses. That worked for a number of years, except where we are now, where we're located in Southern Maine, it's a CTE statewide formula. What we receive does not cover, the subsidy we have does not color, cover everything in terms of our salaries and benefits. There's a gap there. So we've, with the other sending schools of SRTC, we've got together, and we've now combined the capital budget with that need. And as you can see, through that, we were able to save almost $200,000 by being able to make that change. So, you know, kudos to SRTC in terms of trying to be able to change that for.
And we also received additional subsidy of $170,000 for CTE that also goes against this budget.
Okay, in terms of our regular subsidy?
Yep.
Yep, as well. Okay, so we can move on to Article 4. Article 4 is Other Instruction. This is primarily where athletics impact. You can see that there, back on February 5th, we did take a lot of action here, pulling that out. Those are the items on the right-hand side. There are some things that are still in play, that are still part of this budget, looking at first-team volleyball. And then in terms of the stipend and also other additional costs of that. We also are looking at the student accident insurance for the district. Small dollars when you consider that to make sure that all of our people can be covered and it's not a barrier to people not participating. And then family ID, we use that program at the high school, middle school. We're still using the old pen and paper models. And then we were hoping, there's some updates that need to happen for the bleachers at Cobb Stadium for our middle school athletic program. Many of those were, you know, we made some changes in cuts by removing Cobb Stadium upgrades for the bleachers and the track. Were removed from the budget before we did our work on the 29th. But we do have some bleacher upgrades. We were hoping to bring that. We were hoping to bring that number down. We did get the quote this weekend and it's actually a little bit higher than 50,500. So we were not able to capture any savings there. But when you look at that budget, it's increased by 112,242. Our turn the page part of that is 4% and 48,347.
Um, well, I have two, two things I want to wrap. So the Cobb bleachers, I personally feel like, as a parent, I am A-OK bringing a chair to the lacrosse games and to the track games. I know that, but I just, I feel like we need to kind of look at that one a little bit more, just in the logistics especially. It's just a lot of money right now and we're so tight that I just don't, I don't know. I feel like maybe there's a workaround. I think of a lot of the other athletic fields that I go and parents have to bring a chair and, you know, especially at the middle school games that I've attended. But that's just something to bring up. Can we go back to the last page? I just wanted to make, to ask a clarifying question, although I already know the answer. So, because I know that I had a little bit of a like reaction when I saw the price tag with the SRTC coordinator and when I asked, the reason that is, that is including, all of these are including insurance packages.
Yep.
Right.
It's a salary and benefits where they meet on their education.
Right.
Background, years of experience and health insurance.
And insurance package. Okay.
And that's a position that's also is shared with our other sending schools as well. They, they also contribute towards that cost. So that's not landing solely on the Sanford taxpayer.
Right. And again, just with the SRTC, similar to special ed, we, we are sharing a lot of things with the seven sending schools, but also get quite a bit of state funding for that program.
Yep. Yep.
And with the 9.2% of 112,242, so we see the new items in the budget, is it safe to assume that whatever's left is the increase in transportation?
Article Four.
No, but that, this does not add up to 112,000.
Yes. So the increase in athletics is also an increase in stipends, it's an increase in officials' fees, it's an increase in transportation.
Health insurance.
Health insurance, all of those pieces.
And just to add on, because this, again, was another shocking point for me, was that with the transportation, that the athletic transportation went up 25% from last year to the, to?
12%.
Oh, I, okay. Where did I get 25%?
12% for athletics. That's special ed, transportation.
Okay. Thank you. This is why I'm asking questions.
Yeah. And that article will be coming up. Article Five, Student and Staff Support. This one has an increase of 7%, 285,723. Just the turn the page part of this is 4.1%, 164,940. Items that are, that were not in the budget last year, they were in the, they were covered, we had them, but they were covered by either grants through Title I or through ESSER funds. And one of those is a middle school counselor, a school counselor, 74,953. And then also looking at the grade level leader stipends, moving those into the local budget out of title budget is going to be 31,164. Article Six, System Admin, that's just increases 3%, 32,034. That's basically salaries and benefits. And you look, it's increased 6.5% just under 70,000. There's a new item there that 50% removed from the title budget into the admin assistant, 37,932. I will say that we are continuing to look in this area and continuing to look at how we might be able to continue with some more savings in this area or also to be able to go offset the 37,932 addition to this budget. So we are working closely with that and I am confident that there may be some potential there for some restructuring to capture some more savings. All right. Article Seven, that's school admin, 2.3% increase, 62,276. The turn the page article of that is 1.9% or 51,134. There's a couple of things not continuing here. We reduced a year-round high school administrative assistant to school year only, saving 12,177. This evening, we did, um, put up removing the high school, school counseling receptionist, savings of 50,301. And then there is one item in there that was not in the local budget last year. That is the nursing assistant at Sanford Middle School. That was a position that is currently covered by ESSER. But we've seen the data in terms of that position at the middle school of four grades. The, yeah, we'll go to Article Eight. Earlier, Amy was talking about transportation. That's been an increase of 18.8%, 402,969. That is the contracted rate increase. And turn the eight-page article for that is also right there at that same amount. We did receive some subsidy, but not enough to cover the increase.
We received 103,000 additional subsidy for transportation.
For transportation. But those costs went up. We don't own our own buses, so that's a contracted service that we entered into. We had the contract that increased 9%, nine and a half percent?
Nine and a half.
Nine and a half percent just in our contract for our regular routes, but we also get an increase on special ed and an increase on, due mainly to monitors and also an increase in the athletics.
I was going to say, our previous contract with Ledgmere was a five-year contract. In each one of those years, we only had a 3% increase. And so we were due for an increase when we went out to bid again, just based on the salaries they have to pay, salaries and benefits, so.
But you also see the gap in state subsidy in terms of covering that. So that's Article Eight, Transportation. We'll go to Article Nine, Facilities and Maintenance. That has an increase of 3.4%, 209,269. Turning the page for that is very similar, 3.1 or 194,257. We did remove the second boiler for Willard that was in the initial budget. That saved us 221,148. We'll just move that expense into the future. And then with the city and the change that they had, they're transferring the mowing of our Sanford High School athletic fields back to us. And so that's going to have to, we're going to have to add in 15,000, 15,012 to absorb that into Article Nine. All right? We'll move over to Article Ten, Debt Service. This one is for all of our construction. This is decreased 1.6%. The turn the page is the same amount, 171,769. This is just a pass-through. This is just basically from our state funding that we get for our construction projects. You'll see over time that is, that is decreasing, but that is primarily what we're receiving for the revenue to offset that, that debt service. Article Eleven is WSSR and the Performing Arts Center. That, very small budget, so when you just see it go up 15,748, it still is a 14.7%. Turn the page for that is 11.7%, 12,522. Much of that is moving WSSR into that article. New items in there, there are some microphone receivers that are being requested for 3,226. Moving to Article Twelve, well, it's not Article Twelve, sorry. It's a separate piece. It's our Sanford Community Adult Education.
I'm sorry. Can I say something about WSSR-TV? Can you explain to the public too that we're required, I mean, we, we have to have these meetings televised? So WSSR-TV is important to have. It's not like we can just cut them out of our budget either.
Correct. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you, Emily. Emily's got some experience that goes back with that, with that position and whatnot. And so that's something that we work, like this evening's being recorded, that's part of the budget to be able to come back and be able to do that. All right. It's not an article, it's a standalone separate part, but it is part of our school budget and that's adult education. And SEAE, that, their budget went up an increase of 5.8%, 33,79. But we actually, when we turn that page, we actually decreased there because our state funding that we received in subsidy, we had additional state subsidy this year, so that actually had a net taxation, a decrease of 10,797. So I think that's our last slide, correct? Nope. One more? Nope. Oh, yeah. So here's, here's, we've put it all into one page in terms of, when you look at where we are right now, looking ahead to the 2024, 2025 budget, you're going to see 38 positions less than what we had this current year. And so that is our work that's been done to date as far as also what is for consideration this evening. And we did go in to be able to asterisk those that have, were ESSER positions. So you can see that, we knew that was coming for that, but you can also see there's also other positions in there that have also been removed as well. Okay. And then we can move into one more and that brings us back to where we currently, if the, if this evening, what has been up for consideration, if those are accepted, you're going to see a overall increase in expenses of 6.1% and an overall increase, increase of taxation of 10.4%.
Can I ask a question about Article Seven? That slide where we made the decision on two, two-five, I'm sorry, reducing the high school admin assistant to school year only versus the schools at a glance that you emailed us from Jen's request? That's present day right now. So the Sanford High School in the main office, they have two year-round, one school year? So that, so essentially they would be going to ones, one year-round, two school year?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a retirement.
Yep. And part of that is we're able to restructure that with an upcoming retirement. Yep. 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 Okay. So getting back to our last page there that shows the summary of this evening's work, is there any questions on that, comments on that? And this is, this is, when, I think it's hard to ask for comments because I don't think anyone is sitting here pleased to say, sure, sign me up to get behind all of these changes because, you know, as we've mentioned consistently, there's an impact here. We're not talking about positions or programs that aren't working or having a positive impact on students. This is really getting down to us having to crunch the numbers for us to be able to move ahead in doing that. So that is, that's a real yucky feeling. I know this is impactful. I know that I can speak for the school committee, that this is not what people signed up for or this isn't how people are trying to get involved. It's very challenging to go around and talk to people, to be able to let them know through all of their efforts and hard work that their, that their position or their program is being considered for removal. And it's not because of a deficit in terms of performance or impact, but it's where we're at in terms of. I know, as I look at that, we know that we have to approve a budget between, on February 26th. What I would recommend is, I know for a goal, I would like to see us have a budget that is approved on February 26th that has an expense less than 6%, under 6%. And if we were able to do that, that would actually make taxation also under 10%. And so I think as we look at those numbers, if the considerations are taken this evening, we would also, on top of that, need to find or cut an additional 62,000, 62,070. And so that would be something that I think is a minimum we'd want to be able to be looking at because that gets us under 6% expense increase and under 10% for a taxation increase. There's, none of this is final because we don't know what the city council is going to be able to come back and, and be able to ask and mandate for us. I think we all would expect that in an ideal world, they would say, sure, add some money back because of the impact on those lost positions. I think as much as they'd like to do that, financial reality is such that that's probably not a possibility. I think at the end, we don't want to say, is there any way we can hang on to what we've got now? And I, I think that's something that people would want us to be able to try to do, but the impact is when you're looking at the financial number and the impacts, I still think we've got some more work to do down the line. But that is to, to be determined. But I would be comfortable trying to bring forward a budget to the city council that is under 10% taxation increase and under 6% for expenses. Well, I think, nothing, nothing we do tonight is final, okay? Because there is that, how it can move. It's not good. I think we all see the forecast and we all see where things are in doing that. Even if we have to cut further, there's still maybe some things that we can come back and be able to continue to shift. We have, we will continue to work as an administrative team to be able to look at those types of things and trying to weigh those impacts and seeing what it comes into. But as of now, that would be the considerations for this evening to help us continue to at least move forward in the, in the direction of trying to, for reductions.
I just want to take a minute to also echo your sentiments in that, again, I speak only for myself, but when we come out of these meetings, you know, it's not something that I'm able to just kind of check at the door. And I, I don't think anybody at this table does that. I mean, it is truly work that you lose sleep over. So I, I want everyone to know that like, that we hear you and we agree with you and this isn't a position that we want to be in, but it's where we're at. And so just from that human element, I hope that you can appreciate that it's not good work for us. It's not work we want to do. It's work that we're charged with and that it sits with us.
I guess, is there any, any, any recommended changes to what we've put forward tonight or with that, knowing that even if we go forward, nothing is in finality, but we're at least moving towards? Come on forward.
I mean, I make that recommendation. We, you know, we, we've done that work and so I'll make the recommendation. We, you know, we, we've done that work, and so I'll make the recommendation that we accept the proposed presentation as presented, and we'll move forward with the process.
Just, we did that last week, knowing, I think people were hesitant, saying, wait a minute, does this mean it's final? And everyone was like, it's not, but at least us are continuing to do our work for that. Or would people want us, there's some additional information that people requested, we'll be able to get that. But in the meantime, is there any other hesitation or concerns?
Other than, I'm feeling sick to my stomach? No. Just.
I think for me, I need to just sit with it a little bit, and just kind of, you know, we heard what you said. I just, I mean, I personally need to sit with it, so.
So our next, yep, we have a school committee workshop. Our next one is this Wednesday, that's 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. The city chambers are being used, so we'll be downstairs in the conference room. So there's another opportunity for us to be able to continue to move forward. I would recommend that we also schedule a school committee budget workshop prior to our school committee meeting on Monday, February 26th. And so that will be something that will be allowing us to continue work, because that evening, we are going to have to be able to approve a budget. And we approve a budget, all we're approving is basically what the financial impact is to the budget. We're not, it's just a number that has all of the, all of this into it.
Correct.
For that. So you're not going to say, this is the number that we're providing to the city council that they can take in, see how it fits with the city budget, see what the impact, overall impact on taxation's going to be, and then it's going to be, from there, we then have to determine if there's going to be further action taken for that, which, as I've mentioned, unfortunately, I am expecting that our work is not done, unfortunately.
I don't think we can sit with it. I think we sat with it when we made these, these, you know.
We're meeting on Wednesday, coming back on the 26th, so I think we're moving forward with this.
Yeah.
But I also think there's, there also may be some things as we come back on the 26th. It may be something where, where there's been some movement to come in to be.
No, I didn't mean that these are final, but they are in consideration right here in this moment, so I don't, I don't think we can sit with it. I, I think it is a formal, it is a formal recommendation to move forward, but knowing that if we can find, you know, $75,000 elsewhere, then you can keep your resource room teacher. But, so nothing's final, but the, you know, we, we have to, when we come back on Wednesday, these numbers will be included. Yeah, so I second the motion that Jen made.
Yeah, any discussion?
So my discussion is that, I echo what Emily says, there's a process, and so I, I would find the process contradictory if we're coming to some meetings to ratify and accept the proposed changes that we've prior, previously worked on, and then other meetings, we were just kind of like, oh, we'll revisit it. Because as she stated, and I feel like we all know, these are the changes that we've previously worked on, we were together when we worked on them, that was the process, but nothing is stood in stone. So ratifying and accepting those proposed changes tonight does not bind us to this
All right, so.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Technically, we can't vote in a workshop, but, but what I, I need to know if we're moving forward in terms of this type of piece. That was it. I just wanted to get a general consensus for us to be able to do that. With the idea that nothing's in stone, we can revisit. Okay, yep, will do. Okay, so next meeting, 4 o'clock, Wednesday, this week. And then next week, we'll be off, and then we'll look at, coming back on Monday, February Okay, so probably, to any final comments before we adjourn?
Doesn't look like it. We're all pretty speechless and nursing upset stomachs here, so recommendation to adjourn this meeting at 6:10.
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor? All in favor. Thank you, everybody.